I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Brendeman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Randall is on the phone, and Jones is absent with notice.
Here.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three minutes of the previous meeting are regular meeting minutes from 3:15 of 2022.
Motion to approve.
A second.
A motion and a second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approved bills submitted for payment. Some regular bills here.
It's just payroll.
Just payroll, okay. Now we have public comments section, public input on non-agenda items. As per the agenda, we're going to limit these comments to five minutes per speaker.
Public comments now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, sorry.
Yep, on non-agenda items.
Oh.
So...
So the pipeline is...
Tell them later.
That's on me, yeah, thank you. All right. Anything further?
Hey, Bill, I'm Howard for the record. Since no one ran against Mark O'Hara, I'd like to, uh, please appoint Benjamin Parker for Ward Two for your consideration in the future.
Benjamin Parker for Ward Two.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, we're going to jump ahead on the agenda here to the review approved, Resolution 2022-5, create tax income finance district number one.
Can I stop you for a minute, Craig?
Absolutely.
We got a 705 hearing.
Yep.
You're going to get the TIP done in one minute?
Good review and approve it.
Good, it's kind of like discussion.
All right, we can sit silent for a minute. Let's go through the, let's go right into the reports and, uh, just get our first one off the, off the list here. Sheriff's report.
Hey there, everybody. Deputy Craig, Sheriff's Office. So our 30-day report, uh, we had 199 calls for service this, uh, 30 days, which is a decrease of four. So we had, uh, averaged about 6.63 calls for service. During that time, we had, uh, nine traffic stops, um, which were a decrease of five, with 12 citations and 31 ran warnings and 15, um, road warnings. Want to just highlight the case reports that we have? We had eight of them, which was a decrease of three, and then two arrests were made during that same time. Two things I want to highlight, um, next community policing event that we're having is April 19th at the Hartford Pizza Branch, uh, where available to have pizza, and the conversations will come and join us at, uh, 4:30 PM, 7:30 on April, um, 19th. Um, and then this week, or last week, was the kickoff of our safety patrol, uh, over with West Central Schools. So the partnership between our office and West Central of kind of having middle school ran, uh, patrol, where there's folks or middle schoolers over at Second and Fider and Second, and Van Mark is assuring that crosswalks are safe for the little kids that are crossing to and from, because we've had a lot of close calls this year, so we kind of want to do something about it. So that got kicked off underway, so have a little blimp that I want to just say of kind of what we are all really doing, because then I'll just kind of set that, but if I can, obviously, like this. So basically, the, uh, safety control consists of middle school students that are posted at Second and Fider and Second Van Mark, and this, like I said, this is programs ensure that crosswalks are safe for West Central students that are going to and from school, and then there's a reminder for all drivers that when you're in a school zone, 15 miles an hour, um, and then we got stop signs from the full complete stop, and that pedestrians that are in crosswalk, uh, that they have their ride away, so just make sure that we're all looking at, um, left and right, and if there is pedestrian there, they have the ride away, so, yeah. That's all we got, any questions from the...
No, thank you.
Awesome, cool. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have our 705 hearing, and our first reading of ordinance 731, our amended zoning regulations. This came out of planning and zoning.
Yes.
This is, uh, based on their discussion and some changes they have made.
Basically, the planning and zoning board for, oh, for a few weeks now has been discussing this. In our zoning regulations currently, we allow in our residential section the, um, dividing of a building on the common wall, like, you know, if you have a twin home, you can plot it out during, you know, by the common wall, and then you can have two separate owners on that. We don't have any such wording to allow common wall split in the commercial district. And this all came about, we had a gentleman interested in, um, putting up storage units, who, instead of renting them out, he wanted to just do that, um, divide them at the common wall line and then sell off each individual unit. Well, our current regulations, as they're stated now, doesn't allow that common wall division. So, um, like I said, planning and zoning discussed this for several meetings. First, we were just kind of focusing on storage units and allowing verbiage for that, and then the discussion came about is why not let it for any building? So like some of the shop units, which have different bays, if they have common walls, even those could be, you know, split by that common wall line and sold to different people. Current wording or regulations, uh, would allow, or I said, if we adopt this wording that's been suggested, and it was CICOG that rewrote our ordinance to present this, um, would allow kind of a two, two different scenarios for that. You could, um, plat them out, so you would have the building plat it out at the common wall lines in the property into individual plats, so basically kind of individual little lots. Or you can have a condo-type situation where you just plat out the building portion of it, the building units, um, all on their own, and then the common ground around it would be, um, one ownership, um, similar to like an HOA or whatnot, so you kind of have those options there. And then, then, then basically, that was kind of why we suggested doing this change. It gives more building options to builders or developers, um, instead of just having, you know, strictly only one person can own the building after they rent it out. Now there's some options, and if they do want to put up a building with multiple bays, whether it be storage units or shop-type situation, they not only, you know, can rent it, but they can divide it and sell the individual units. So this is, the changes in there are highlighted, um, like I said, CICOG worked with doing the verbiage for that, and that's what's presented in front of you.
Thanks, Teresa. Planning and zoning recommends approval. Do you know, do we have any surrounding communities that have a similar ordinance?
Sioux Falls allows this, and Brandon does, yeah. Because we kind of, we, Sioux Falls ordinance is kind of a whole different creature, how they says there's zoning regulations, but we looked, this is very similar to Brandon's for reach there, that's where we kind of look at taking some of this verbiage.
All right.
What's the, what's the downside to owning property with no street footage? Because I can think of at least one situation.
Even like the condo situation, and it's some...
Well, somebody could literally own a piece of property and have no, have no front footage.
They would just own that bay, yeah. But they'd probably be paying dues into, like I said, the HOA or, or, you know, that entity that is maintaining the common ground.
That's not for the city to say whether they're going to pay an HOA, huh?
That's just it, and that's where you set up, it's not really for the city to say whether you rent them or you sell them, or if you do a condo-type situation, or if you plat them all separately.
I, I understand...
It's just a lot of options.
I understand the appetite for somebody to want to build one of these and sell them off as whatever, man caves or she shits, but I just look at what Hartford currently has for existing storage, and the thought of every one of those having an individual owner. I can't put my finger on how I think it would go wrong, but it seems like there's a problem working, but I don't know what it'd be, but...
It's got to be a tough way to live.
I don't live that way, I'm just saying that's...
It's not uncommon, and, uh, what it, in my opinion, what it supports is development and investment in the community, because you can't sometimes make it work if you're going to rent that bay out, but if you sell a bay or two, then all of a sudden you can cash flow that property.
I definitely think it has its purpose going, going into it and actually designing and building something for that purpose, but the majority of the storage in Hartford is not, was not set up that way. The majority in the storage in Hartford was set up, a big building, lots of bays, one owner, rent.
I think all our current ones are set up that way, because like I said, our regulations didn't allow for the split ownership.
Retroactive, it's not retroactive unless they come in on a change of ownership that it doesn't even affect them at that point. They sell the property, the property owner doesn't automatically inherit this ordinance.
If we pass this, somebody that owned a storage unit could literally subdivide 20 units.
I think if we pass this, also, Bosman Storage Units or whatever, I think if somebody, like we said, bought them, they could plat them out into individual lots and...
It's not automatically retroactive without some additional work on the property owner's part.
Yeah, they'd have to plow them out and stuff, yep, yep. Yeah, they couldn't just buy a property the way it is.
So I like if a commercial building composed of two or more individually stranded lots, all rest, you like in the Euro lot line, often describe the bus not be considered.
Right. Thank you, yeah, you're...
I'm conforming for doing the call.
Thank you, you're right, yep.
So just to, just for an example, you brought up Bosmans. So in that, in that one area, there's, what is there, five units in there? Five units, and those are big units. So if each one of those... Does, does, does the replat, would the replat have to be approved by planning and zoning, would, would it not?
It'd have to be approved by the city, yeah.
Because you could literally make that thing, you literally tried to plat it just squares, just...
Yeah, so anybody who wants to try to take advantage of this, they'll still have to go through a...
Yeah.
The city, you have to get it replatted.
Any public input?
Actually, yeah, if you mind, um, you want to walk up there?
Yes, please.
Benjamin Parker, um, I guess the only concern I would have with being able to replot like the storage unit is, take the larger units, as you said, like Bosman has, uh, what if somebody says, well, I replotted, that just cost me a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, well, I've already got a house built, just some interior walls, what's to stop them from doing something like that?
So planning and zoning has, has to approve the replat, correct?
The city does. You go through the city engineer and the city, yeah, I'm concerned.
That would be the only concern that I, I, I could see, I mean, if someone's saying, well, the structure's already built, all I gotta do is put a door, window, and just...
Are you going to look at it?
Full hook, you know, water sewer, electrical...
You're talking about living it.
Yeah.
Well, you can't, you can't do...
Or making an office unit out of it, you know, instead of building an office unit, you know?
You still got to follow our zoning regulations for the usage. This is just a long, uh, so, so, like I said, you couldn't live it, because you can't do that in commercial zones. Only certain type of businesses are allowed, so you still got to follow the usage for commercial properties.
That was the only concern for that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we still have those regulations in place. So all our commercial and industrial regulations stay in place. The highlight there is just allow, adds verbiage to allow that common wall split, similar to what we got in residential section.
Sandy Dean, and I have several problems running through my mind of what this could lead to, and I look, think about a storage unit, and people who rent this step, this sections already have issues with their neighbor next door because the wall isn't high enough, or, you know, there isn't privacy enough, there isn't security enough, there isn't, you know, and then you've got, okay, if you're going to leave it up to them to decide, okay, they just buy this piece of building, but then who maintains the land? Who's responsible for mowing and weeding and, and all those other things? I think without a lot more planning and zoning, right around this particular kind of structure, um, I think it's dangerous.
That would be a condo-type situation, so if it's just gonna, just plat up, just sell the units, then there has to be a common ownership, an entity that owns the common ground, that maintains the road, maintain, mows the grass to that, so that, when they come in to try to replat it or to sell them off that way, they do need to come to the city for our approval that we would look at all that stuff.
So if they divide those five Bosman units, just with that wall, but they have a wall in between, does it go clear the roof? Does it go clear the roof, a lot of those...
I had no idea.
It's three units that go all the way to the wall, go all the way to the ceiling.
So then the plot line goes just where that wall is?
Yep, that's, yep, the lot line goes where the wall, common wall is.
Like a twin home, margin blocks.
Yep, like a twin home, yeah.
I think that, I think, um, I think the confusion stems from the first sentence when, in, in the explanation of our agenda items, and that is the individual mini warehouse storage units. And in my opinion, a better word, a better term would be contractor condos, contractor storage, contractor...
Yeah, like I said, the discussion started with the mini warehouse, and then I, later on in my explanation, I said, we decided to switch it to allow the contractor shops, the units.
That's the, that's the verbiage that people are fixating on.
Yeah, so this isn't just storage units, this is any building within a commercial district that shares the common walls.
You would plaid all of them.
Yes, plaid up, all of them that has common, so like I said, any shop that has three bays, four bays or whatever, you can divide it into three or four units, you know, yeah.
There's nothing in, uh, I haven't had a chance to review that thoroughly, the ordinance. Nothing in there that says that each unit has to have its own sewer and water, it could literally be a cold storage unit.
Could be, yep. And when this conversation was first started, I mean, me and Craig and ISG, we sat down and talked to the individual that, that wanted to do this, or talked about how we would work water and sewer. Our regulations, our design standards are still in place, they still have to, each lot still has to have a water and sewer service to that lot. If they keep it as one lot into a condo-type situation, we would put one meter, go into that lot, and that's what we would bill the association for, and they would pay dues association. If they actually plat it into individual lots, and they want service to each one, well, they can put on a meter to each one of those, and then we would meter each one of those, so, I mean, we can, the meters are, you know, however they're going to set up the, the property, yeah.
They'd have to have a main open front, so each, each plated unit would have to have its own service to the main. So, I mean, there's some expense involved for them to, once they plod them or break them into...
See, but you're talking about new construction, I'm talking about old construction.
Even then, they're...
The state standards are still in place.
It's still breaking them in.
So to that point, Craig, if I'm building a fourplex in, in Hartford, a residential fourplex, each unit has a main, you don't have one.
Each year it has a service, but a service has, a service has to go to a main, which would have to be the city standards.
Okay, because what I heard was by eight contractor shops, I'd have eight mains.
Eight independent services, yeah, that would connect to one main, that would be city standards. So the retrofitting is definitely more difficult, yeah.
So, so for an older structure, in order for this to, they'd have to do all that to get on board with the current standard?
Unless they're, if, you, you outlined it too, it could be unwater, unsewer, you know, and it could be just storage where it's not, not actually getting served by water and sewer.
Those, those properties and projects are generally considered planned developments, and you, you can minimize, maximize your square footage of structure versus having to replat, follow all the setback guidelines, those sorts of things.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 732.
Second? Second.
A motion and a second? Call the vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
Brendeman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
And I'm yes.
And this is just first reading.
And this was brought up one time by one individual, or just been...
One individual started, but planning and zoning has discussed it probably four times. It's been, yeah, we've discussed it a few times.
All right, our 710 hearing, first reading of ordinance 732, rezone of north 686 feet of the 2B Plated Track Two of Maple Pass addition from agricultural to residential.
So this is the property we annexed, um, a little while ago, just recently here, and, uh, the owners are asking to rezone, so when it came in as annexed, it's, it's basically residential still until we zone it. They're asking for the north portion to be rezoned to residential. Um, this too went through planning and zoning last week, and they recommend approval.
So do you have a question regarding the footage? The agenda says 686, but in our packet it says 989.
Yeah, I noticed that when I was bringing it over, that's a type of line, 686 according to the...
686, okay.
That area, it's, it's outlined with the map too, that's the exhibit, so that's what we'll submit for the zone. I'm a little bit suffocating.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 732, rezone of north 686.
Second, motion and a second?
Yeah.
Call the vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
Brendeman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Well, we've all had some time to think about the TIP, review approved Resolution 2022-5, create tax income finance district number one. Lisa, can you give us a brief explanation of this?
Yeah, so, um, community, this was coming, Maple Pass LLC has submitted, um, a TIP application to the city. It's been reviewed by Tom and myself. It went to planning and zoning last week for their review, and they do recommend approval. Basically, this is creation of the TIP districts, or so the area, um, it's not the development plan yet, that still needs to go through planning and zoning one more time as far as the specifics on the loan and our agreement with the developer and with the city, but this here resolution is stating that, um, they've asked to have a TIP for this area, this land that we annexed a little while ago, and that it meets the criteria of a TIP for economic development, and that we agree to put this area into a TIP district, and we'll call it TIP District Number One. Their proposal is in the packet, I don't know, you have any questions regarding that?
What were the terms of the TIP, Teresa, the timeline, years?
So, um, 20 years is what they're going to, yeah, and that's the max, I believe that's what they can ask for.
That's the maximum, yeah. I think their anticipation is that they'll retire the debt much sooner than that.
Nine, yeah.
Yeah, roughly nine years.
Yeah, roughly nine years.
So just to dumb this down for me, because my eyes always roll back in my head when we talk about TIPS, the city wouldn't receive any of the tax funding for that property, correct?
Correct.
That money would be applied to...
Payment of the TIP for the loan.
Or be applied to debt service.
Yes.
So...
The city will get what they get today, so the base value of the property out there, unapproved, the city would still receive...
And as it improves and as it goes up in assessed value, those tax dollars paid, they are paying off the debt service.
Correct.
We don't get our taxes, um, the school district doesn't get theirs either, and planning and zoning talked about this quite a bit, but the way the state tax formula is set up, they basically kind of will get, in essence, reimbursed. They'll supplement what they're losing, so in essence, the school won't be, because of the state funding formula, they won't be losing their tax dollars, correct?
And that, that kind of goes back to, I don't know, the gentleman in the back, um, we'll still get the assessed value of the present property, it's just over the span of 20 years or less, if it pans out, then we'll realize the increase probably.
Correct.
Yep, just like the city, yeah.
Gentleman in the back is Daniel Boy.
Oh, yeah.
Gentleman in the back is Tom Archer.
So when, so when this water sewer goes in, streets go in, gets approved by, city engineer signs up on it, city takes it over, we could be looking at taking care of that property for 17 years without recouping any money off that TIP data. Correct? I mean, is that, is that dumb enough for us?
He'd get the water and sewer fees. He'd get the water and sewer.
Get the water and sewer.
Yes.
But other than that...
We'd have to dollar for the mid-dollar stuff.
Oh, the street maintenance.
Street maintenance fees, and the sewer and water fees. This would just be the general tax letter.
Is it fair to say, because this TIP is for economic development, um, if they weren't requesting this TIP, the city would be asked to put that, that street in, Maple Pass, whatever that street's name is? Is that fair to, to serve that development, similar to what we, what we did for, um, Mickelson?
I, I mean, yeah, anybody come in and petition the city to ask you to put in a street, and...
But we, we have, we have a, we have a history of new developments not being allowed to petition to have streets improved.
One thing that's nice about this TIP... One thing that's nice about this... One thing that's nice about this TIF district is the developer is taking out the TIF loan, not asking the city to do that. So it does not go against our city debt. And as you know, we got some pretty big projects that we will be loaning, so that's a good thing in mind.
And the TIF loan is held by the developer, is correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, TIF loan is held by the developer, took me a minute to process what you're saying. The TIF loan is held by the developer, not the city, so it does not go against our debt service, that's correct.
The, the city's involvement will be the tax dollars will come into a special fund that Karen will have set up, and then they'll be reverted over to, back to the loan payments for the.
To the debt service on the loans.
So just an in and out transaction of the city's.
Okay. Uh, planning and zoning's recommendation was to approve it, is there any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash five for the TIF district one.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seen none, call the vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
I'm a yes. All right, moving on, we have our, our reports. Cambridge Economic Development Director Report, Amy Far, good to see you, Amy.
Thanks for having me tonight. So I have all my information in the packet, I just want to touch on a few things. Um, the chamber is doing an Easter coloring contest, um, so we've placed different, um, or placed coloring pages throughout the community. So if you have children that would like to partake in that opportunity, please let them do that. Judging will take place, um, April eleventh through the fourteenth for that. We have Discover Hartford Week, um, May second through the seventh. Um, in the mail, you will soon get a trivia direct mailer that'll be coming out late April, so be watching for that, partake in that. And then again, this year we'll be doing the Golden Heart sponsorships, where the Golden Hearts will be hidden around town, and we encourage you and your families to get out and see a little bit more of Hartford and look for some hearts. Um, on the development side, um, working on a few things tomorrow, the, um, Hartford Area Development Foundation will be doing a tour of Vanilla Bean Kings. Um, but we are looking right now to schedule a groundbreaking the second week of May for Midco. We are still working on locking that date down. Um, some of you may have heard that we made some announcements last week. Dairy Queen does plan to come to Hartford, as well as Get and Go up on Western Avenue will be building. Um, and then also the dispensary has started building, you can see the, the framework going up. Um, tomorrow night is Big Night, we have our ISG Community Development Plan, sorry if I'm stealing your thunder again. Um, so we encourage all of you to come out to that too, it's at six thirty at West Central School, um, in the Becker Center. And then Envision, investors are invited to their Envision meeting on Thursday evening as well. And that was my report.
Thank you, Amy. Questions or discussion for Amy? Move on to the city engineer report, Mr. Docstead.
Thank you, um, we reviewed the plots on lot twenty-six A, twenty-six B and block four, Western Meadows. Uh, we have, uh, also lot one and block one and lots twelve A and twelve B and block two, um, and then track one, two, three and Maple Pass Edition, so it's quite a few plots actually. Um, glad you said it, uh, we did review the site plan on Dairy Queen, so I could actually say that. Um, and we reviewed the site plan on Get and Go as well. Um, one update on project update that we had in there as well, the, the Vance Peterson. Vance had provided a letter from, um, Merle Roy's on the paving indicated that the plan to have the issue fixed, uh, in May, which is, which is great to see. Uh, the six month reconstruction, um, we do have those bid tabs still attached, I know we went over that last time, um, that we, we bid that, uh, back in, um, on the tenth. And the low bidder on the base bid was Zachary's Construction, and then the low bidder of the base bid plus add alternate was Holstein Excavating. Um, and then what we, uh, in the bid documents, the contractor will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder of the base bid or the base bid plus add alternate. Um, the base bid was point two percent under our engineer's estimate and the add alternate, on the other hand, was twenty-six percent over the estimate. We did outline, um, the steel casing pipe was really the higher one driving that cost in that that add alternate was most certainly a project that's been designed that we can bid at a later time as well. But it's, it's your decision if you want to go base bid or base bid plus add alternate. Questions on that one?
Other questions, we're coming back to the plan review?
Yeah.
Do, are elevations part of that plan review?
Yes, depending on where they're at in the, in their design process, but absolutely, yep.
As we look at the dispensary, it looks really high. I mean, maybe. Compared to the neighbors, you know, there's going to be potentially, I think of, uh, water issues that we've had with other neighbors.
We had one comment, I think it was on that one, on the north side of that one, that we did have some recommendations in regards to how they're going to drain that away.
Okay.
Um, so we can most certainly follow up with that and make sure that that's getting done out in the field.
Sure.
Plans as good as the, as the way it gets constructed, right? So almost certainly take a look.
All right, that's, that's, sounds good.
On the add alternate option?
Yeah.
Um, it talks about increased emergency flow. Is there an issue with, I assume that's fire hydrants, those types of things on that side of town?
Yeah, so overall though, it, it, we want to loop that water main as many times as possible to, to get our access going underneath the highway. Uh, the closest access to that is, there's one to the west and there's one to the east as well. Um, so that's there, but there's always a, when, when you get in a dead end situation, that's a dead end water main that doesn't connect to anything else, that's something where we always want to continue to create those loops. So it was an opportunity where we were looking at doing construction in the particular area. I think it is a, um, a project that we want to keep on our priority list moving forward. Um, it's, it's whether you think that the, the prices are going to come down, um, for steel casing pipe, which is, uh, it's, it's, it's tough to tell at this point. Um, but, but it's something we most certainly can bid at a later time as well, because it is designed as a separate set of plans just fine.
Do we have any other plans in that area that, in the near future?
We have a water main extension, um, not so much in that particular, but not far, in town, um, that, that we will be having a part of the CIP next year. So we can most certainly have a water main specific project, um, next year as well and include this in that bidding.
I had this put in there just like I said, because we were working that area and if you scroll down a little further, um, we just.
The map.
Uh, there's a map that shows all the, so the only dead end that we have there is what's coming down in Vannemark from the north going to Highway thirty-eight. And that line actually has quite a bit of usage on it with apartments and everything else, so it's not like it's stagnant water, so it's always getting turned over. Um, like David is saying, you'd like to loop everything as much as you can. This is one of those things I thought, well, for an area, the numbers come in right, let's go ahead and get looped. But we also are planning on if, if we don't do the alternate, that it will be stubbed out, T-valves early accordingly in that intersection where we're in there, so that at a later date, you'll still end up, your later date will still be about, um, same amount of tear up and removal, because you're still going to have to dig on both ends that jack or, uh, pipe underneath there to get a rig put in. So yeah, it can be, it can be done with this project or it can be done at a later date, you know, it's not going to affect the flow of our water or, you know, fire damage or anything like that. Like I said, we're, we're looped pretty good, if you come on that map, if you see all the things looped through town like that, so.
It's a good, it's a good add, it's, it's whether it's an add with the previous.
Price would have been lower, I would have been all over pushing for it. This is a, you know, like I said, the price is, it's a little high for what we thought it was going to be, but that's ultimate decisions for you guys to make.
Looking at the print of our plan here, looks like maybe Oaks is the next area that maybe we want to get a water line under. The thirty-eight is up there.
Well, you'd have next to there you got Mont, which has a line under it. A main has a line under it. Oaks actually does have a line under it, or no, it did stop. And then if you go back toward the golf course, there is a line that comes down through an easement that runs over to Sage Horn, so it feeds that way. Plus outside the map, there is another line that comes from the pump station out a mile north of town that does go down the ditch on the, um, east side of the Colton Road that brings another feed into town, so. We're sitting, I mean, looped wise, it just, like I said, you're trying to, and even, you know, the state's always, you know, wants you to give every dead end as possible, you know, and that, it's not a mandatory thing, but it's just something, you always look to see if the, the numbers are right, you should go ahead and try to get them taken care of.
Two, two questions come to mind when I look at Vannemark, and does that alternate specifically? When, when was that intersection redone?
That intersection itself got redone back in the early nineties?
The way it?
The Highway thirty-eight.
The way thirty-eight and Vannemark, oh, it had to be after that, because that was gravel.
Oh, I think, okay, but I thought you meant the highway.
No, I'm talking about how it, the transition there from, from Vannemark to thirty-eight, was that in nineteen or eighteen?
Uh, it's been, Vannemark got done, but see, we didn't, when we did Vannemark, we didn't touch that concrete.
Right.
That concrete was already there, so that intersection's been established for quite a while.
Okay, all right, that's, it stopped, yeah.
We stopped, we stopped at the right way, the city limits, right, at the right way, Highway thirty-eight.
Got you, got you, okay. Yeah, I didn't know if there's, if we needed to, you know, proactively be throwing some steel casing if we have an opportunity to, um, and is, that's my one question, second question is, is there an alternative to steel casing? Not that's to spec?
Not, not, not that's to spec, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've got the bids, um, as, as noted, a little bid for a project without the alternate is a local contractor. Test the waters here, but I'll make a motion to, towards the base bid to Zachary's Construction.
Again?
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call the vote, Randall?
No.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Madison?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right, the next item on the agenda, review financing options for the six month project, so how are we going to do it? How are we going to pay for it, straight on reserves, right?
Would you say straight on reserves?
All on reserves.
Yeah. Karen kind of speak, she kind of worked on, Teresa and I kind of reviewed where our reserves were sitting and, um, the total project cost, and we thought we could use some money out of each of the general fund, water fund and sewer fund reserves, I have noted on the sheet I provided. Plus in previous budget meetings, we have earmarked money for this project, so I've also taken that off. So based on kind of what Teresa and I have discussed, we would have to be loaning, um, about six hundred and fifty thousand. And that is not with doing the add alternate, that's just the base bid. And then down below, I called the three local banks, or reached out to the three local banks and got terms, five-year terms and ten-year term rates and loan origination fee amounts.
What's your recommendation?
I think US Bank. In the law room, if you add the payments plus the loan fee, you're going to be paying the least amount to them. Even though a lot of banks, you know, doesn't, has a real low loan origination fee, you're making it up in the payments and same thing with break, kind of vice versa with Great Western, yeah, you got a low interest rate, but you're paying a higher loan origination fee, so that kind of cancels them out and, yeah.
Did, did you hear that, uh, Levon, uh, recommendation was to go with US Bank?
And I was just thinking like a five-year, maybe we could get this loan knocked off our books.
I did hear that, yeah.
Okay. Mark, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to do the five-year care with two point nine percent interest with US Bank.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Call the vote, O'Hara?
I'm standing.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
No.
I'm a yes. All right, next item, review, approve, design proposal for future wastewater treatment facility. Engineers' information is in the packet, um, as we've historically been doing. This was presented to us at our last meeting, gives us some time to review the numbers and scope and to actually open ourselves up on public input. It's pretty quiet regarding this on my end. Further discussion on the proposal?
Have a question, David?
Yep.
Last line of the contract, ISG has not included resident observation, construction, admin and resident testing in this proposal.
Correct.
What, uh, what kind of number do you put on that?
Um, you know, the, the one, the reason, and I know when we outlined it the first time a couple of months ago, um, the reason that we're not at this point in time is we still want to evaluate if we want to take this through the CMAR, uh, process uh, with the contractor directly, which will most certainly impact the amount we will need on resident observation. So there's a cost to have them more specifically on there and not managed by a contractor. That would decrease the level of effort that we have on that, and I know we were going to evaluate that as we move forward.
So shouldn't we evaluate that before we sign an open-ended contract?
At, at the point in time that we designed this, we could most certainly have resident observation, construction administration, resident testing done by others as well.
This, this is an open-ended bill. And this is very, this is going to get us bid documents.
Absolutely, yep.
And then what's bid? What you're, what you're discussing is included in potentially what path we go down for that.
On construction, yep.
Which we could get a quote on separate.
Absolutely, different, yep.
Part of that. So in the event the wheels fall off the bus, this plan goes on the shelf, it's still a complete plan, we can pull it off the shelf and utilize it at any point.
Agreed.
Unless we get to the bid portion or?
Through bid. Through permitting and bidding. Correct.
This is just through permitting and bidding, this isn't through construction?
That's the resident observation, construction, and resident.
So that's all in the back then?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
I'm a little late to the party, can you remind me what is the end of life on our current facility?
We're, so that's a, that's a good question. On the compliance schedule, we just updated that, actually, and sent that back, uh, to DA and R, because the compliance schedule originally completion was October first of twenty twenty-five. It still is, that's what we're anticipating to still meet. But what we did have to request from them is they had an interim completion for the, uh, April first of twenty twenty-two to submit plans and specs to DE and R, now DA and R. Um, but we have actually amended that and outlined that to DA and R, but we still have a compliance schedule that is October first of twenty twenty-five for the completion of the facility.
So we have to move forward on it.
Teresa, do you remember, in, in my head, I'm thinking that the Stockwell's one hundred percent contract was one feet start to finish? Or am I misremembering that? Or am I misremembering that?
No, the, the first contract they submitted was like a thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Design contract, we did act on that, and then we had them do one which was a total hundred percent. But I think that too did not have the construction administration.
Did that not have that in there?
Yeah. I think it was hundred percent design and whatnot, but I, I think both of them don't have their construction administration in.
It is a fair assessment to say you wouldn't probably see that on this page, because it's hard to put a number on what that is, because you don't know what the structure is.
Agreed.
You've got an idea, we're gonna do an aero mod, but there could be something that transpires between now and bid letting, that changes the size and scope of the project.
Yeah, not to mention if you have a different, if you select a different delivery model.
Sure, absolutely.
Because there, there's two types of, there's two types of builder, right, Dave, I can't, I don't recall. One's a general.
Oh, so, and that would be going through, and that would go through a hard bid process, so final plans.
You think your contractor, he gets the bid and away you go.
That's the CMA, yeah, that's the CMA, is they're gonna go along with us at, at typically at the, soon we'd be going through with tho- those consultants, the contractors going through that CMA pro- CMAR selection process with them to determine who's gonna construct it in advance of you actually getting plans finally done. The other process is the hard bid process, everything's completely designed, you bring it to market, just like we did with sixth month, you send it out to everybody and they submit, um, proposal bids for that particular.
So, again, dumbing it down for me, either pick your builder and find the price out later, or put it out for bids, get your, get your bid number, and that's who you're building.
How does your controls package, or look on your wastewater treatment facilities, is it a very specific? Yeah, just walk, walk me through that, the controls package.
Yeah, yeah, so we actually, um, quite a few folks will just lean specifically on the suppliers to supply the control package. We actually have in-house electrical engineering that we will actually develop the control package. We most certainly work with all of the suppliers of the, because Aero Mod will have specifics that they'll need to be put into that. But then our, our automation controls folks will actually work on that plan specifically and bring those up to market.
But always seems to be the wild card, the controls.
Yes, I don't disagree, and there's plenty of firms that don't have folks that work in controls.
Yeah.
That do these facilities, and all they do is blend five packages together, which never works out really well.
Have a very vague spec and then they.
Yeah.
When things will solve, they learn how the controls people.
Yep.
Not an engineer. Okay. Do you have any questions, Levon?
I do not.
Any further discussion? Make a motion to approve the agreement?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Call the vote. Madison?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Randall?
Yes.
Randall?
Yep.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, we have Craig's report, over to Superintendent.
I'm just gonna hit on a few things, uh, some updates too. Total precondition that you have started doing the curb work up there for that, uh, next phase of their development. I look forward to be putting asphalt down probably within a month or so, um, as soon as the plants open up. So ISG is aware of that, they're gonna give the inspections done, right, so. Next thing, uh, streets, um, highway thirty-eight, we did get the one light in, um, it got put up that next day. I checked it that night, and it seems like it's gonna be a good light, I've been working with DOT, trying to see if they still wanna flip half the bill or whatever, but I haven't heard back on that, but the rest of the lights have been ordered and, um, we'll get them up soon.
That's too bright.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
It'll be, uh, it'll be a nice improvement up there. So as soon as they get in, Sue Valley's been working with us great on that, uh, keeping, getting everything up there, get things moving, so. We'll be getting them done as quick as can. Traffic counts, we've been moving that traffic trailer around and getting the counts out on the, for the tubes and that stuff, so we're getting some information for the downtown area for traffic, cars, trucks, speeds, all that stuff, information, so. Uh, water meters, um, so we are completely done with our old system, which was the Orion laptop read. That's completely out of use for us right now. All the new systems in, we have five that we have right now that the endpoints are not communicating with the meters, so we're got them ready to go, I'm hoping maybe tomorrow or the next day we'll have them done, so we'll be up, up and running eight hundred percent, so. Um, which isn't too bad for twelve hundred meters, that twelve that didn't work, so it's not too bad in my own personal. So, um, along with that, um, I've had a few towns that have the same system that we had, that their, either their laptop went down on them, or their, uh, control of the radio read part of it went down, and they still, like T, for example, they've got eight hundred and some meters right now that they can't read. They've been borrowing a system from MTS out of Minneapolis, they have one system, and they're gonna be pulling from T and moving it up to Aberdeen, because Aberdeen had their system, but now everybody's at that same boat timeframe or anything like that, so. I would like to be able to take our unit and borrow it out to some of these towns that can use it, um, and set a surplus here and out and get rid of it, I mean, it's doing us absolutely no good. The laptop itself's sixteen, seventeen years old. Um, it still wasn't working, but we're having problems with the endpoints and that stuff, we're reading them. But I'd like to be able, be able to borrow that out to other towns that can use it, just do a good favor. Eight years ago, whatever, when we had one of our lift stations, one of the lift stations, um, they changed the, from three G to four G, and they did it quick on us, and everybody had to send their units in and get them updated. We were down a unit, so Harrisburg was kind enough to borrow us one for six months, because they had next door on the shelves, so. So it's kind of nice to be able to do that favor to other towns and help them out, um, I don't, and Teresa talked a little bit, um, really didn't want to surplus it out and give it to somebody, because then you don't know what's gonna happen to it. This way, if they need to borrow it, they can come to us and ask if they can borrow it, you know. So I'm throwing that out to a few guys, I just think it'd be a good gesture for other towns in the area and stuff.
You want a motion?
I'd love to have a motion on that, yeah.
So, say.
Got a motion and a second to, oh, Craig, to, um, loan our old system out. Any, for, any discussion? Call the vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Madison? Monahan?
Yeah.
I'm yes.
And then the only other, the last part of my report, um, sports complex, we're working with, trying to get supplies to finish up the fencing out there, we're still pushing to have it ready by the end of the month, um. It's gonna be a little bit of a mess out there with the mud, we're still working with contractors, trying to get the manholes up to grade. So, we're, we're gonna be pushing hard to get this, that deadline for that first tournament, but I think we'll be making it, so. We'll still keep looking at that. Then the other thing, uh, well, plus, uh, Jamboree's did, um, the committee bought six bleachers that they're gonna let the city use throughout the years. Uh, they just wanted to be able to use them for that weekend, so they're, they were purchased from Jamboree money that was given to them from the council for the events and stuff like that over the years, plus fundraisers they have done, so. Um, but they are available for us to use in the parks. And then the only other thing on my agenda is the, uh, crack ceiling price and the mastic. Like, over many years, we've been using highway improvements, I have gotten prices, uh, from other ones at different times. He is five cents more a foot this year, uh, he was seventy-five cents a foot last year, and he's been at that price for us for a few years until, talking about three years, he's been at that price. The mastic, he raised out a nickel a pound, um, he was the same price for that for two, last two, three years too. He's been treating us real well, and I'd like to go with him again and approve the prices for quotes for crack ceiling and mastic.
Was that last year, we actually did a few other ones?
Yeah, it was either last year or the year before, yeah. And truthfully, I've talked to their towns in the area, and I don't tell them what we're getting for cracks in, because they're paying more than what we are for Brett to do it, so Brett's from town here, so he treats us pretty good, so.
Got a motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh.
I'm in.
Quotes for crack ceiling.
Right, right.
Motion and a second, should get that, Karen. Any further discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Madison?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
I'm yes.
That's all I got, assuming that he has anything for me.
He takes half of the, yeah, correct.
We have him yet, no. Hopefully it's next week, this week, we'll get up there and get a big one.
Just an observation on, uh, this super project out there. There's some discussion about trying to do some of that low line, the wetland area there, the wetter area. Looks like it's all just shaped back to the way it was.
They did some filling in there, um, I don't know how much extra boots around there.
Yeah, is there any way to utilize that, you said we didn't have any reason, uh, it's not, it's not a wetland, so we don't have to keep it?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we got an opportunity at a project where to come up where we have a place to build some, we could.
We could. Yep.
I have nothing further, thanks, Craig.
All right, finance officer report.
Yeah, my report's in the packet, and, same old, same old, I don't have anything to add unless someone asks questions.
I need a few golf cart, I haven't seen you on this, getting a few golf cart cases, is it?
A few, they really started to come in now, so, see more next month.
Orders are gonna be, yeah, so, I don't know. All right, thank you. Uh, city administrator report, Teresa.
Just gonna touch on a few highlights too, um, the bike and rec trail grant, you know, we finally got the notice to proceed for that, so, um, last week, Craig and I and ISG, both the guys went in and walked in to kind of look, uh, see where, how that layout might go, they're gonna do some more surveying and get some top hold done, and then we'll try to kind of lay it out for us, so we keep moving on that project. We don't have a contract for that design, so I assume we'll have ISG bring one before your next meeting to look at doing that for you to review.
Could have just been a force count? Or actually be, no, it'd be an actual design.
It's a project, it's under a grant, so we'd wanna put, yeah, we want to have a separate contract.
Contract, yep.
Yep, because it is a grant, so. Um, and then just, uh, point out for you, the, um, Mikelson Road, the FEMA law mark is finally approved, that whole process, March twenty-third, it became effective, so. We should be all to look at that project at this point, it's gonna long go, but we're done there. I pointed out when we talked about the, tipped a little bit, that, um, Tommy and Zonia at their next meeting is gonna review now the developer agreement, the agreement between the developer and the city, and, um, they'll review and look at that next week, and then at your next meeting, oh, we'll come before you guys review, and we can talk a little more specific, so who's doing what.
In the tip plan.
Yeah, yeah, and they have submitted that, Tom has it, and we've been reviewing it, so we'll kind of put on that note at our next meeting. Summer help, I started interviewing, um, summer, um, help for the pool, Craig has a, we've got a few applications for the public works department, so, um, we're starting that process. Right now, we do have the people for the dump site monitors hired, I told you that before. Amy Seabird is, I rehired her for the pool manager, she's been with us several years, and, um, like I said, I'm, now I've got several interviews set up this week for the lifeguards, and take a look at that, so we'll have a, an update again for you at our next meeting, but we're getting quite a fair number of applicants, and, um, I think I've got about six applicants for lifeguards, we would like eight, but a couple of girls told me they know some friends that might do it, so hopefully we'll get those all hired before that starts up. The only thing with park rep program, we do have one person that applied for the director, I'll be interviewing that person, but I do not have any applicants for a coordinator or helpers with that program, so hopefully, we have till July for that program, so we've got a little time, so hopefully we'll see some applicants in, and, uh, we'll keep you posted on that. And then also, uh, last week, I sat down with three, um, marketing firms to kind of talk about, um, we put budget money aside for doing a little rebranding to do a new logo or whatnot, they're gonna, each one of them are gonna put a proposal together for us, and those should be ready for your next meeting as well, so we can kind of look at that and see if we want to entertain, um, doing something with one of the firms. That's my update, any questions?
Anticipated pool open date?
Um, so the day after school gets out, so it'll be May eighteenth, last day of school is the seventeenth, we will open May eighteenth.
Do you wanna see a motion regarding the design for the bike and rec trail or?
To have them submit one. Have them submit a proposal, that would be good.
We have a motion to authorize ISG to submit a design contract for the bike and rec trail project from, or is that fire to main?
Yep, to the fire to main.
Make a motion to them submit contract for the trail.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, how's, uh, how's that other agenda item gonna affect that at all or more?
What do you mean?
Is that the, uh, land spot? Does that have any bearing on the design?
No, whether we get that land or not, we have, we have property, we can put the trust on, yeah, yeah, so.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, call the vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Madison?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. All right, so old business review approved, park and rep board recommendation for dog park. So that information's in your packet.
Yes.
Also in the, what were the public file that information, Teresa? On the city website?
On the city website, yep, the whole package on the city website, yep. Yep, so in your packet, um, we did have updated cost figures in there, uh, because when we went, when we were submitting grants, the le- latest update we had was in twenty twenty-one, so we updated those cost figures. So that budget number is in your packet, um, I also, we did receive the one donation from the Hartford area Bike and Rec Trail before they dissolved. They show, um, that figure in there. Looks like we, from what we originally budgeted for the grant, with that donation, we're short about three thousand dollars, and, um, I put in my report, um, Troy and Dina Larson, um, have graciously donated, um, say they're gonna donate three thousand, so. We would have the funds to cover this without dipping into reserves. Plus, I'm also looking at, um, a couple other small grants out there to help supplement it, so.
This is still open for review?
Yes, if you'd like to speak, just provide your name.
Kenneth Bruns.
Thank you.
I don't own a dog, but my comment is, as far as, I do have a son that raises very expensive hunting dogs, he trains them, he ends up, he sells them, all that. And he keeps up on the dog world as far as what's going on. A lot of cities right now are finding that they have to shut down their dog parks because of the fact of disease. They become very high maintenance, they end up the point where, um, because of the cleanup and that, and so disease is getting passed on because of it, and that's, and I don't care one way or the other, but I do see it as it could be an issue.
Thank you, sir.
Could we get your name one more time, we didn't catch it for the minutes? Can we get your name one more time, she didn't catch it for the minutes?
Kenneth Bruns, B-R-U-S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident.
I have a question, Ruth Beckler, two five Northeastern Avenue.
Thank you.
If I understand the map correctly of where the dog park is going to go, um, the far east end of the Turtle Creek Park, it looks like it would impact the disc golf course that is current there, and I was curious what plans might be in place to if we still maintain the disc golf course, whether it's rearranged or whatever, is that that's still available?
We got the Tiger Woods of the disc golf world, Craig Wager.
We are, our plan is, we've actually planted some trees, so if this does go through, we're actually gonna move forward the whole stuff up in the Turtle Creek area more by, where you start at.
So they, they don't be in that way?
So we've already looked into that. So we've already looked into that, um, a couple years ago, so we've planted some trees, I don't need to get started, if this does pass it, we'll have more shade in the park, so.
Thank you.
The shorter fairways, we're gonna call it, in a zekid course? It's a pedal lake.
Karen, you have other questions?
We just have a couple of questions about who's going to maintain the dog park.
The people that utilize it, yeah, the same.
Okay, um, and then that will have a fence around it, or?
Yeah, they're actually designed with it, um, it'll be off the, off the bike path, you know, ten feet or wherever, kind of follow the bike path up around, there will be a, a small, an area for the small dogs and an area for the larger dogs, so we'll be separate from each other, um, it'll all be completely fenced in, uh, we're planning on having water there, um, there'll be kind of like a, I'll just call it a security gate when you walk in, it's like you're, you get in one area, you close it, then you let your dog in the other area. Kind of like some of Sioux Falls is, is it or something?
I saw on the plan that there's a screen, what's the purpose of the screen?
Good question.
Are you talking about the, the screening of the bushes?
No, the screen to the, to the west.
Oh, yeah, so those would be just trees, just to, so for some more screening for the dog park, yeah, just to have a buffer area between kind of the two sections of the park.
Okay.
And the screening will be like trees, there's bushes.
Screen the view from, from the residence south of the Turtle Creek, has those bushes grow well?
Yep, yeah, cause they'll go all the way around the south exterior too.
So can anyone use the dog park, or does it have to be the dogs that are registered with the city?
So.
That's a great question.
So suggested for a beach, like we looked at some of Sioux Falls, and I've talked with our insurance companies, that only licensed pets and vaccinated pets should be using the screen, uh, the dog park.
So is somebody going to monitor that at the?
We, at this time, don't have plans to have a full-time monitor, but it is always something that our code enforcer can drop in on, check them all, see if they got their license, and of course they don't get a city license until, unless they're vaccinated, so then we know if they have their license. Um, I have talked with the Sioux Falls Humane Society, actually, a little bit, if they would, if they're in town, pop by and kind of monitor that, uh, it's not in our contract, so they put it that out to us, but they says if their officers are, are in town on, say, a different call or whatnot, and the time allows, they could randomly pop in and do that, so.
So let's say somebody gets vetted at the dog park, who is liable for that?
The owners, and I'll say that right in our signage from our insurance company.
Yeah, cause we have to post.
Yep, we have to post all these rules and regulations, yep, and then like I said, I got verbiage from our insurance company, what needs to be posted, so.
Do you anticipate any complaints about barking?
There's always complaints, there's always complaints, so I'm sure, probably will be at some point, yeah.
Yeah, because the, that backs up right to a lot of people's backyards.
Yeah, yeah, you have the creek area there above it, but yeah, there are residents behind there.
But the creek, I mean, the dogs can go right across the creek.
They, they won't affirm the dog park fence, cause their friends come.
But it's going to draw a lot more people to that area with dogs than there already is right now.
It'll be nice to have them all on location.
Maybe not. Uh, one last question, why are we paving the parking lot?
For ADA purposes?
Okay, so it's fine that it's a gravel road, but then?
If we don't pave the, and that's just an option, to pave or to concrete, we will have to, we don't have to, but I think we have, it would be the best interest of the city to at least have two spots that are ADA compliant, that you can get them to from the parking lot, other vehicles on hard surface to the park area. So that's something ADA is huge, that you.
Sure, that makes sense.
So the gates and everything will be ADA compliant as well?
Well, also everybody, so a handicapped person can get out of the vehicle to the dog facility with the passes.
Well, we were just wondering what we had to look forward to in our backyard, so.
You know roughly how many feet it is from your backyard to the, to the dog fence, to the, to this proposed dog park?
Well, I'm on the map.
Yes, but I was just wondering if you take.
Oh, I don't know, I mean, from my backyard to the, uh, to the bike path?
Yeah.
And, you know, we can hear people talking when they're walking on the bike paths, so we're certainly gonna hear dogs and all that. And we have a lot of dogs now that are not on leashes, and, you know, they can go right through the creek and into the backyard. So we're just anticipating how many more dogs are gonna have.
And we do have a leash law, so they should be on, that's owner's responsibility, and if you see that, you know, you should call, you should call them in, I mean.
Well, I can call them all day long.
Yeah.
I took a video this morning, I mean, every time I look out my back window, somebody has their dog off leash, and that's what we're anticipating, seeing a lot more of that happening.
And that's, yeah.
And there's gonna be nobody to enforce it, putting a dog park in a residential spot.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's, it's the dog owner's responsibility to follow the laws, and just like speeding, if they don't follow the laws, it's, you know, we have enforcement when they see, you know, yeah.
But do they find those dogs, do they find their way all the way to your property, or do they just stay on the city property?
It's so low, you can walk right across it.
Sure.
I would suggest that you call it in, cause we don't get any calls for services regarding that, so how do we, how can we enforce if we don't see about it or hear about it?
Well, they're long gone by the times, you would get, I mean, it's, it's people walking.
If it's during the week, we have to start.
Yeah, we have to start tracking it, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a problem, it's not being addressed because no one's, no one's calling it in, and we don't see everything.
Right.
So.
Even, to that point, yeah, even though they're long gone, uh, if the call isn't made, it can't be recorded.
Cause I checked the last thirty days for animal problems, and we had zero in, in Hartford, so.
Hi, Troy Larson, president of the park and rec board, just wanna reiterate our strong support, this has been three years in the making, and Travis, you made a great point, all these complaints about dogs off the leash, that's why, uh, we need the dog park, to put them all in one place, let them run around, and have them in a controlled area, so thank you for your support, we've been after this a long time, uh, the Girl Scout sent me like ten texts of talking points, but I don't wanna snatch, uh, victory or defeat from the jaws of victory, so I'll just sit down, thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Any further discussion?
I think my input is that I'm not against a dog park, I just think it's different location, and we received, uh, since the pro constitution email, well-put email in my opinion, from one of our constituents about the location, not that there are empty dog parks in general, but the location, um, not being particularly ideal. Um, we have a nice bike trail for people to walk on and to enjoy, we already have dog poop all over the bike trail, as we get, and part of the reason for the location, unfortunately, as dog owners are, there are not all dog owners that will be willing to put their dogs in the dog park, and we will still have dogs wherever, wherever the owners or the dogs with their owners choose to go, um, my belief is that when I have an objection, I can bring a suggestion to the table. So again, as I've said before, my suggestion is when the park, that southwest corner cannot be utilized for anything else as far as board fill, without a lot of backfill and dirt brought in. Um, I feel that a dog park would be better utilized, oh, by twenty park away from residential area and away from a bike trail for walking paths.
Thank you, Levon. Uh, that southwest area that she's referring to, Craig, isn't that planned or not, isn't the proposed use for that area to have a maintenance shed or structure there?
That area that we hauled in the dirt, no, I guess, that's what, that was set aside for.
I, I couldn't comment.
So that, that area, uh, Craig said, uh, the proposed use for that space is for a maintenance facility, a maintenance shed of some sort, and that's why the fill was brought into that area?
Okay, proposed.
I think, no matter where we propose to put this, I think we will find objections from somebody somewhere. I gotta imagine that people playing sports would come in and say, we don't wanna listen to barking dogs when we have games going on, or I don't want it by my house, I mean, I don't know if there's ever gonna be a perfect location for everybody in the community, unfortunately. So that's just my two cents, I personally believe this is a good location for it, and, and am in favor of it where it's proposed.
Would you like to make motions?
I agree.
I will.
I agree that there is no perfect location, but I think that there are better locations than others in, we do a residential area.
What is the zoning there, Teresa?
NRC, so it's.
NRC, it's not residential.
It's not residential.
I'll make a motion to approve, I've got a part of the ASR thing.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna add one thing, I, uh, I remember there was a time when, uh, we were talking about bike and rec trail, and people said that was the most ignorant thing to spend tax money on, and after they were built, then people were complaining that they didn't get the snow off of them quick enough in the wear time, because there was that many people walking on them. Uh, the dog park, and I, to what Mark said, you pick a location, I can find you six people that say that's stupidest place to put it, and I can find probably ten people who think that's a great place to put it. Regardless of the location, I guess that's a, that's a personal, that's a personal decision between council members, but I mean, uh, I'd, I'd like to think, I'd like to think we built it and it works like it's intended and it doesn't get abused, and there's no problems. But in the back of my mind, I wonder whether it's, uh, whether it's another skate park, cause I remember when, uh, when that went upside down, but I'd like to, uh, I'd like to have enough faith in humanity to know that, uh, cause honestly, I don't have a dog, but if I did have a dog, it wouldn't use it. So, and I, I'd like to think there's probably a lot of people in town that have a dog in their own, and I'd like to think that the people that are gonna use it are gonna be responsible. Human being, I mean, I know people with the, you know, I know, I know people that, that treat their dogs like they treat their kids and their family member, and they, they board them in, you know, hide in places when they go on vacation and all that, as a Christmas presents, and I'd like to think those are the responsible people that are gonna use that park. That's what I'd like to think, but I, I certainly hope we don't have people coming out from, uh, God knows where, just to run a dog in Hartford, that makes no sense, but I guess if we do, if we have people traveling from Sioux Falls to use the Hartford park, and people, I don't know, if they live outside city limits, why, well, Troy would be the exception, he lives outside the city limits, but he's donating money, and I can see him bringing his dogs, but he's probably got a good dog. I like to think a good person got a good dog.
What you just, uh, what you, what you've just described is a tourist attraction, people come into Hartford, use the dog park.
Well.
I have a very part, I mean, I think my hope is that, and I, and I think you will see that people that aren't responsible dog owners don't bring them to the park, and having more people utilizing the dog park that are responsible owners will hopefully uh, put pressure on some of the ones who maybe are letting their dogs run at large, um, I know that we have some in all of our neighborhoods, um, at different times, and, um, so I think, I think some of the dog owners will put as much pressure, um, on some of the folks with their dogs at large as well. Because those are people who want the dog park, um, it's people who want a controlled area to take them off leash.
All right, I wanna call the vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
No.
I'm yes. All right, our next item, view approved downtown Hartford's request for the interim closing of First Street from Main Avenue East to the alley, so I think that's about a hundred and sixty feet. Uh, this was on, again, the last, the last meeting, I should say. We, um, Craig, then, you've had the traffic counters out, and you've got some traffic patterns established, um, have you, have they been moved yet, or would you anticipate moving those?
We, I believe in the one on First Street, uh, we'll, we'll probably this week here, uh, the one by the blue, we did take the numbers off of it, we've been bouncing around on other sides to see which way the traffic's coming from, if it's coming from Main and turning down First Street, or if, you know, trying to get some patterns that way, uh, we still have a lot results to get out and tests to do, um, what's really gonna be probably a some telltale is if we block it off for two, three days, a week, or whatever, um, where the traffic goes, what happens to the traffic, and that's, that's where we're actually seeing a lot more results. There is, what was it, three hundred and some cars that went by here on a daily basis, I think, or?
On First?
Yeah. Weekdays, yeah, we're, daily average, daily traffic is three hundred ninety-one and that's weekends, yeah, so day, so weekdays, it's, yeah, so total throughout the week is three fifty-five a day, I mean, there's quite a bit of traffic, but I would never believe the traffic counts, we got on Western Avenue either, you know, we set them out there, and it's every ten seconds there's a car going out, so on average, I think it was like three thousand or something like that a day. So traffic counts are gonna, I mean, at least go, build tell patterns, see where, where the traffic's going, stuff like that, but it's.
How accurate are these traffic counters, and specifically how it relates to the speed?
The speed, I would not consider that, but the traffic count itself is very accurate, um, what happens with the tubes is they can roll, and if they get a little closer, they don't need to be very much closer, and they'll throw the speeds way out.
Okay.
So, the, when you look at it, you look at the eighty percentile, that's a pretty true number on the traffic counts. Um, but yeah, the speeds, now the speed trailer, we would put that up on areas where it's harder to get the tubes to stay down, and that will tell you traffic counts, you know, from one direction though.
Yeah.
Um, where the tubes can tell different directions, they can tell you if it's a car, if it's a truck, if it's a bus, you know, motorcycle, golf cart, they can tell all that information.
I ran in front of it before, it's a little faster, can it tell that?
It wasn't very fast.
No, I was just.
It didn't register.
Then I was breathing, so maybe I can't remember the number for manual.
But that's what we've been doing as far as that, to get.
You're gonna do it, like a temporary closure, see?
We haven't yet, no, that's a way to see what your guys' feelings are at that, and, um, if we did a temporary closure, I would recommend doing it during a school time, yeah, so that we get an accurate thing for what the school results are, so.
Sure, yeah, we, we already spoke to West Central, and they're in favor of it, or they're not, or hadn't necessarily opposed to it, so, um, yeah, that'd be the next logical thing, then, would be to. Now, that'd be the next logical thing then, would be to put some barricades on, uh, on First. And then do we count, like, what Second goes to?
Yeah, we'd, we'd put back on Second, we'd put them back on Railroad, um, you know, your gravel's probably not gonna change much, Second still definitely changed. And that's why we got the speed trailer out there so we can kind of get patterns, you know? Like, so the tubes don't work, they're hard to get anchored down good on the asphalt, but they do, we've got them down here, we've got them on First, it just, they work real well on, without curb, so...
I'm sorry. But you need to look at counts further. Need a motion or just wanna general consensus that that's the move to make?
Either way, we can move barricades around, so, and that's one thing about them, they're not gonna be, like, full of water. So, if there was an emergency or some situation, not that the fire trucks can't figure out how to get around barricades, you know, they, they can. Um, but yeah, they can be, they can be moved.
Perhaps, I think, you need a motion to make an interim so that we can duly accept what happens and how speed and the count and all of that goes.
Sounds like a great motion, Levon, can we make that? Your motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, to the interim closing of First Street from Main Avenue East to the alley.
Do we have a second? Yeah. Do we have any further discussion?
I think it's a bad idea regardless of what the counts are.
Thanks, Freeman.
Well, the fact, the fact is if there's four hundred cars on that a day, those four hundred cars are gonna go to a different street. And then whatever the traffic is on that street is gonna go up by four hundred. So...
Craig, before you close that interim, we, it would be my opinion that you should move those counters to the streets, that you anticipate the traffic moving into.
Oh, we will, yeah.
So, prior to closing First, you'll move the counters to Second?
Yeah, and with that, we've, we've got the speed trailer up there right now and we had the other one over on, uh, gravel, except when that snow came in, it just was so lucky they would pull, would move it somewhere else, so...
Just for the public's, you know, perception that tomorrow the barricades will, and the counters get moved, we didn't have a baseline for those streets.
I would like to keep going through this week with either where we got them now or move them to another street quick and then maybe look at if that's what you said, you know, close it on Monday and then move everything out to different, you know, to the streets we anticipate traffic and see what they have.
So, by our next meeting?
We'll have with the speed trailer. It'll be the one-way traffic, which will be going, you know, to the school.
So, by our next meeting, that'll have given you time to then move the traffic counters and place the, the barricades interim.
Yeah, because even what you get, once you move the barricades and you get them numbers, you take the barricades down, you can still continue to get numbers on the, on First Street again and see if it's changed. Some people might get in the habit of going, "You know what, it's better for me to go this other way anyway."
Sure.
So, your numbers could fluctuate just from having to close for a week, so...
I think it does hold well for due diligence, data collection.
I agree.
Again, Benjamin Parker, um, as far as the interim closing goes, I don't see this where that would be beneficial. I understand you wanna try and get a traffic count where traffic would shift to, but you still have businesses...
How do you do that?
I, I just don't see where it's necessary, I don't think it's beneficial to close a street just to get a traffic count where they shift to when you're gonna affect businesses, I mean, you shut that side of the street down, people park there for the bank, for the brewery, for Golden West, I mean, people just park on the shoulder of that street regardless on both sides, no matter what they're doing. Even the senior center next door, they park down there. I don't see as how doing an interim closing, especially there in a school week, when it's the business of three hundred fifty-plus vehicles a day, is beneficial to the community at all. I think it's a waste of time and a waste of resources and revenue that we don't need to spend, I mean, you want a traffic count, put the traffic counters up on Second Street up, that's fine. Again, the shares reported with stating that they're wanting to put crossing guards up for the school at Beta and Vandermark. You ship four hundred vehicles, even half of it, two hundred up there, more. What's gonna happen up there? There's a reason why the school wants to put those crossing guards up there, because there's already an issue with traffic.
But they look for support.
From the busing standpoint, yes, from a busing standpoint, the, the school has, that they could reroute the buses. Well, that's fine, let them reroute the buses around First, they don't have to go down First. I wasn't here all week, going down railroad, going in front of the elevator as well as First. They still ride up Second though. I'm not counting the buses, I'm talking about just cars. The traffic counts is three hundred fifty vehicles roughly, for cars, roughly, I think it was twenty-seven trucks a day?
Cars and trucks, yeah, something like that.
So, buses, trucks, you know, UPS trucks, beer delivery guys, you know? I mean, those are separate, we're just talking about cars.
Hard to make the argument for not closing it though, you don't have the facts to support it, in my opinion.
I'm looking at it from the safety point of view, if we close it, just, if you do a study, we shift all that extra traffic up there, it's already a chaotic mess in the morning and afternoon for the school.
Pull it, yeah, in a matter of minutes.
So, you're gonna have it open for school hours and then close it down the rest of the day? Is that a proposal that the city would entertain, so traffic's not impeded, Karen drop off and pick up, pick up time?
I would say if the school made that request, then we would certainly entertain it because safety is the, you know, top priority there.
I mean, that's what I'm, that, that, that's why I'm opposed to doing the interim study, closing it down for, you know, a school week because it affects the school traffic, so...
Yeah, and with them showing support for it, that's hard to...
They're not showing support for shutting down the street, they're showing support for rerouting the buses, so, is what, is exactly what Daniel Hoist said last week.
I'll, I'll qualify, I mean, I, I support closing of the street. And again, it, it's important for me to quantify that I'm, I'm not in support of closing it tomorrow. I'm in support of closing it to get a count, to see how it will affect, and that enables all of us to make an informed decision then. If in the end, you, I can't foresee what it might be that would make us say no, and again, it's not just me as a representative of the school district, but if something occurs that would take us from, we're not in support for it currently, we gotta make an informed decision, not a gut decision. So, I'm in support of it temporary, and that's what I'm hearing, it, it's a temporary closure.
True.
I, I wouldn't encourage from a decision making standpoint that we move right away to, "Nope, we're gonna, done." That's not an informed decision. We don't have data to back that up or support it.
Analytics is what we're after.
Oh, Daniel.
But, but, but again, my, my point is just from a safety point, during school hours, you know, you're gonna shut half of those three hundred cars up there on the Second Street right from the school?
You know, there's folks that would argue we shouldn't allow, you know, long bed four-door pickups to park on the corner, don't you think?
There, there, there are.
You know, so...
Would argue that my short bed four-door truck shouldn't park right where it does, Drive Bay Bus Street from Golden West, but you know what, that's right at my office front door.
So, that's all we're after, is just, I'm gonna call a vote. Marley-Hande?
What was the motion?
Levon made the motion.
Motion was for interim closing of First Street from Main Avenue East to the alley on an interim basis.
No.
Madison? Freeman?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
I'm yes.
You guys ready to vote for that show?
Pardon me?
That show? Should we maybe put a timeframe on it? I don't know if you can redact your motion if you've already voted on it.
We haven't put a timeframe on any of these, um, but yeah, that's a great point.
And again, I'm, I'm just terrible, I mean...
You know, uh, how long have these counts, counters been in place when you pulled these reports?
Couple weeks.
And it?
Some have only been out there three, four days because we're moving around. We have, if, to shut it down to get accurate numbers and actually know what we're getting into, it should be from a Monday to a Monday.
I concur.
So that way you could see the weekend stuff. Pull it, and when we do that, I will personally go to the elevator and ask them if they see, pick up a traffic driving through their lots, I don't think you'll see it because it is rough.
Yes.
But I'll double check with them because we're not gonna put counters there, so we'll make sure we get the information from the elevators, so we get too accurate from them themselves.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said, then we'll move it to the other streets and find out where the traffic's going and have it all accurate information.
Yeah, if we just limit it to a weekend?
That's all I would do.
The interim shutdown for one week?
The baseline should follow the same timeframe though too, on Monday to Monday, your baseline.
Mm-hmm.
So, weeks for that and then shut it down for your week and do the same thing.
In the school.
Yeah, we'll get, you know, you'll have your, your average daily, which is gonna be, you know, and we can, off the counters, we can pull it down to what minute they're driving by, if you want that much information, which is a lot. Um, but yeah, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna wanna do it for a full week and then pull it again, but in the meantime, as we're getting that, we want us to keep moving these other ones around to find out what our daily volume is on a normal weekday and try to be mobile as long as we can, you know, so, try to get as much, much data as possible.
Correct, great.
Benjamin and I, you know, maybe nobody else noticed it, but we just bump fists, so we're not enemies here, so, it's all, it's all great, it's a good discussion. I might encourage a broader time because on Sunday morning coming out of St. George, there's a hundred cars coming out of there. Every other time but on Sunday morning, there's no cars coming out of there. So, I think we've gotta have a broader look than just a shorter look, it gives us a bigger cross sampling. I'm not suggesting let's do it for a year, I'm suggesting do it for two weeks. A longer time, which will get us a better, more accurate count. Something we consider.
That's gonna be their decision.
Right, right. This is easy, church, my kids.
Well, okay, so we can put a, we can put a timeframe on it, we have the motion, they don't need to redact it, or we can, we can just now give further guidance as to how long we want, um, I want that to be, is that fair?
All right, so, I would amend my motion to make a motion for interim closing of First Street from Main Avenue East to the alley for data collection for two weeks.
Motion's been amended to put a two-week timeframe on that, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We've already voted on the first motion completely.
I bet you have a timeframe, so it's really...
Just adding, yeah, basically, it's a motion. Good motion, I'll second. Any further discussion? O'Hara?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
Freeman?
Yeah.
Madison?
Yes.
Marley-Hande?
Yeah.
I'm yes. Thank you for the discussion. Park and Rec Board recommendation, erect dugouts for the new fields in Swanson Park. As Craig mentioned, those away nice and parks, get the fencing done, I believe there's a, isn't there an event scheduled out there for?
Yeah, uh, they wanna have a ball tournament, uh, April thirty-third. So, they, Eric's been in contact with me and I said, trying to keep him informed what's going on. The fields themselves, I mean, if once, if we get the fencing done, the field will be ready.
Sure, okay, so, um, and we, yeah, we didn't have the dugouts on the first two fields prepared away, so, uh, what's the timeline? I'm just working on the dugouts.
So, what the Park and Rec Board discussed at their meeting, um, is in your packet there, is that obviously you need bases as well to go with that, and that costs a little over seven hundred dollars. Um, they discussed fence caps and ties and it will agree that that is something we can probably wait, either look at next budget cycle or, you know, at another time. Um, the bases, back up the bases, that seven hundred, it was discussed that maybe another organization might sponsor those, um, the ones we have out there now, actually the softball association purchased. Um, they're, since baseball's using this now, I don't know if they're really on board with purchasing for these next two fields, but it is something that Matt Evans thought maybe the Sports Complex Committee, they've got some money, would sponsor. And then also, um, Mark Winters from the Legion came in and said that's something he would maybe approach the Legion about sponsoring, so... We're hoping to get the bases covered, fence caps, they talked about waiting on. Um, the dugout was kind of the real conversation, the actual dugout structures themselves, Craig estimated it'd be about ten thousand dollars to do, you know, four dugouts, two per field. Um, and then the benches, another six thousand to put within the dugout. During the Park and Rec Board meeting, Craig had mentioned for, you know, to get the dugout structures up, we possibly could use bleachers or something on a temporary basis for, you know, places for the players to sit and then maybe look at next year's budget to do the benches. So, it was the recommendation from the Park and Rec Board, uh, they would like to use ten thousand out of their funds, which is in budget, because they got about sixteen thousand surplus towards the dugout structures.
Who's gonna coordinate building those structures?
The dugouts?
Yeah.
We are.
I guess I do.
Clarifying.
And if we decide to go with it, we'll probably need more concrete next week on. So, they've been dug out, so that's part of, or we did that when we removed the black dirt for the fields themselves before they had to learn, so...
Okay.
So, we'll be formed up, get the concrete done and then, like I said, the biggest thing is keeping on American fence to get the fencing on, so...
So, what are we asking for just the dugouts?
Yes, so this, just at this time, the Park and Rec Board would like the council to approve using ten thousand dollars from their budget funds for the dugout structures.
Any public comment?
Theresa, I apologize if I did not hear, but what, what construction material, what?
It'd be about ten thousand dollars.
Are they gonna be concrete block or are they?
No, it'd be the concrete slab and then, they'll look just like the other two, uh, it'll be the tin work over the top, structured through it.
It spends, the better part of forty-six summers in a diode in some form and some of them are just microwaves. You can call them what you want, but you're baking in the sun, just, I was curious.
They'll be the, similar to what the ones are, are now.
So, they match the two current goals there.
I'll make a motion to use Hartford's, uh, third, the dugout structures for twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Craig? Let's work with the minutes promptly, sounds like. Any further discussion? Madison?
Yes.
Marley-Hande?
Yeah.
Freeman?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
I'm yes. Moving on to update on the summit, Carbon Solutions LLC application to the Public Utilities Commission for carbon dioxide pipeline, and then, uh, we wanna discuss application for party status of the city, as a city partner.
Correct. So, um, as we talked about a couple meetings ago, um, uh, carbon's pipeline is proposed to go west of the city. I did go to the public meeting that was held by the PUC a week ago to, to listen to what is proposed to come through. Um, basically the gist of it is this will be a pipeline that'll go through a five-state region in our area. The purpose of it is to capture, um, carbon dioxide emissions from these ethanol plants, pressurize them into a pipe and then transport it up to North Dakota for basically, um, putting into a, a filled area there so, um, they can disperse. Um, there, I think there are five different plants and, um, South Dakota that they will be touching on here. I kinda put a summary of, you know, what they talked about at that meeting in your packet for you to review. It'll be a four-point-five billion dollar project, um, they have yet to secure easements from the various landowners that this will be traveling. The map of the proposed pipeline is in your packet, it... It will touch on the very west edge of the city limits. It won't be in city limits, but since we annexed in that property, um, west on Mickelson, it touches the west, far west side of there. So it is touching city limits. Um, I have proposed, um, originally about ten questions of, that I just had from that meeting to the PUC. They've answered what they can and they are working with the company to get further answers. I submitted since then about five more questions that have popped into my head about, um, who's responsible for what, if there is, you know, something happens, who's liable. Um, my suggestion, when I talked about it with Tom too, is that we do apply for party status as they go through this process because the biggest concerns that I can see looking at the city is it's on our west edge. Does that stifle growth going west? I don't know if they're going to allow water and sewer lines to cross it. I don't know if they're going to allow roads to cross it. Um, if not, like I said, that stifles our growth going west. If there is a rupture in the pipeline, um, the ruptures, um, could be as large. They, it's not like an oil spill where it'll be on the ground. It's a cloud of this carbon dioxide that goes into the air. Um, it is hard for the people. I don't know how far that emission travels, how fast it travels, what kind of effects it would have on our citizens. So these are all questions that I have posed that I think we still need answers to, um, before the PUC gets, you know, approval of this permit. So, um, I would suggest that we apply for party status. That way we get all documentation, all findings, all filings as this process goes on. It will be probably about a year process before the PUC makes a decision, but I think it's in the best interest of the city at this point to apply for party status. And so we can have those conversations and get our questions answered and know what we're looking at with this pipeline.
You know, I would allow the city to participate in all of the questioning of the company that's proposing the pipeline as well in a formal setting so that you've got answers that are under oath and, um, proper for the council's consideration at that point.
Mr. Oberon?
Good evening. Um, yeah, that'd be good to have a party line because I do believe Kansas City had a rupture two years ago and killed several people because it is a gas and it just floats. And if we got west flings, which is northwest flings are predominant, that's something to consider. Um, but I came up here actually because, you know, you didn't ask as I was coming up and you went ahead and started to vote on whole business. But as far as the safety, closing this road, okay, just, just from my perspective, okay?
Mr. Oberon?
Thursday night?
I appreciate that. That ship has sailed.
Yeah, I understand. You cut me off before I even come up. You didn't ask for any other comments.
Comment we had, it seemed to be very.
It's safety.
It is about safety, absolutely.
Teresa, as far as the pipeline's concerned, did they, did they say why, because look at it on the map, that's kind of a wanky route they got getting through there.
Yeah, and they never explained why they're running it that way. Um, when I originally looked on the PUC's website as to where this was going, you know, when I first heard about this, and they didn't have where the city limits were, it looked kind of to me like they were going to follow our Dakota Access Pipeline going. But this is, this is dipping further west towards the city. It's got that dip in there and, and I don't know if it's because of, you know, problem getting easements with landowners. I, I don't know the reasoning behind that. They never explained that, so.
It's not to stifle our westward growth.
Well, I don't know if that's the intent of it, but it might happen.
It, it just seems, I mean, to look at it on the map, it just seems, it has no rhyme or reason to it.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know if it's because of. Easement issues or what. They didn't explain, you know, why it is laying out the way it is.
I'd, I'd love to know the answer to that question.
Yep.
Why, how, how they, how they came up with this route.
So really the discussion is to be part of this party or whatever.
Right at this.
Nothing else is going on, is there?
No, right at this point, I just need council approval to apply for party status because we have to apply by the eighth.
So this. I'll make the motion to do it by the party status.
I can add, I have a lot I'd like to add.
What, how do you feel specifically on us applying for party status?
Uh, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I wish you would talk to our county commissioners because they don't have the guts like you guys do.
That's a whole other thing.
Yeah, they don't need, they don't even want to apply for party status. Yeah. This is like, this pipeline is twenty-one hundred pounds of pressure. The test model that I emailed all you guys was eight, an eight-inch pipeline. This is a twenty-inch pipeline. Quite a bit more, um, you know, bigger crewing.
Do you know where the court stands on their, you know, where, where's the bullets stand? Are they?
They are not party project. No, they are, they suppose they're on site.
Okay.
And I think a lot of it is they're concerned about the liability placed on landowners. So they're only bearing this pipe four feet deep. The four feet is all. So consider a wet season, heavy farm equipment, you know, the liability that is on a landowner at a four-foot depth pipe is, you know, we just have no protection.
So that's barely below frost. That's right at frost.
Yeah.
So how do they intend to, if you're a landowner, I mean, I don't know who you are, but if you're a landowner, farmer, I mean, so how are they proposing this force, force annexation or not force annexation?
Well, yeah, domain because my name's Joy Home and we have Dakota Access Pipeline coming through our land. They're using the same attorneys that they use for Dakota Access. And before the pipe, before the PUC hearing, they were already suing us for eminent domain combination. It says Mayam's Law Firm out of, uh, out here. And that's what they, that's what they do. They just are, I mean, they treat landowners like, you know, we just have no safety, really. So we really thank you for taking a, you know, taking a stand, applying for party status. You can always withdraw, you know, but at least you've got a seat at the table if you want. So it's, uh, they're estimated to make, uh, in twelve years, nine billion dollars. Landowners get a one-time payment. And I will tell you with that Dakota Access Pipeline, that pipeline, I mean, we're still trying to work with our land, trying to get that back to what it was before pipeline state. I mean, every year we're having to pick rocks. They never, you know, they never followed the PUC conditions on how to even restore that plant back to its original state. So the PUC, I mean, is, you know, we need cities and counties and we're reaching out for our first responders. I can't imagine a first responder that would want to go to a rupture like this, you know, but they're putting their lives at stake. You know, I mean, fire department people, they, you know, they kind of know, but the P, um, Dakota Access Pipeline, they don't train the first responders really appropriately, so.
Carbon dioxide is what you exhale, not what you inhale.
What's that?
Carbon dioxide is what you exhale, not what you inhale.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for your input.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah. My name is Lyndon Nichols and I belong to the pipeline too. Um, Dakota Access, um, is three hundred feet from my house. This one will be a hundred and forty-three feet. We also have a shut-off valve on our land. Um, so I'm just looking at a hundred and sixty feet between both pipelines. That's a catastrophe for Hartford. I mean, in more, I'm like a mile and a half out of Hartford. So thank you guys for stepping up and applying for party status.
Any further?
And I believe the whole point of this request is stay involved as it moves forward so that we are informed. I think giving back to what this market is about is that we want to stay involved as it all, party status moves forward. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct. Yep. We call a vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Framan?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
I just wanted to dramatic pause like.
Were you, uh, fumbling for the mute switch?
What's that?
Were you fumbling for the mute switch over there?
No, I just, I just wanted to.
All right, we have a, uh, discussed land swap proposal submitted by Ryan Overdon. Uh, this is land, um, he currently owns, Mr. Overdon owns some, but he's not able to accurately, adequately, I should say, access the east, uh, end of his property. That's my summary. Teresa, what's yours?
Well, since I talked to you, it's changed just a little bit because Ryan came in on Friday, actually, when I was putting together the packet. So yes, Ryan Overdon owns property on the south side, um, of the creek along Main Street here. He's got a big portion. There's a map in your packet with it. Um, city owns all along the north side and then some of the south side, the further east you get between, um, Main and Fighter. The north side is where we're planning to do our, our bike path, as you know. If you look kind of closely at that map, you can hardly see, but the creek actually on the west side dips down into Mr. Overdon's property. And so we don't have either side of the creek there for maintenance. It's on his property. Um, he is proposing that city just, at this point, he just wants to know if we're interested at all before we even move further. If we would be interested in swapping it, uh, he would give us, you know, all along, he would give us the north side of the property all the way to Main Street. So kind of that little section there on the west side. And then he's proposing that we would give him, um, kind of a sliver to the north of his property for him to utilize. He originally wanted that sliver to go all the way to Fighter for a second access. After more thought, he thought it would make more sense just to follow his current property line, stop it at, you know, the east end and just get more property north of it. So this is, within the packet is what he's proposing. At this point, he just wants to know and, and he apologizes. He, he's out of time in business and couldn't be here tonight otherwise he would have come. Just wondering if the city is interested in doing some kind of swap and if we should explore that further or if you're not. Um, his intention, I believe, would be a life for life, you know, same square footage for same square footage. Um, we have not had any discussion though about, obviously if we do this, it'll have to be platted out, you know, there will be a cost associated with that. Um, but I don't know if there'd be maybe some attorney fees with doing the switch. So there will be some costs involved. Like I said, we haven't had any discussion of that at this point.
So it's.
I think.
It's, it is nice to have access to the creek, at least on one side, if not both sides, just for maintenance. Uh, a tree goes down or something like that, we can get in there, get cleaned out. Um, we've got, so over the years we've been working on getting the land on both sides of the creek or at least one side of it, you know, throughout town so that we do have cleaning access or anything like that to it. So this is probably the only section in town that we don't have.
This is probably the only, this tiny portion here on the west end that dips down into his property.
Why didn't we buy that property when it was for sale? The whole thing?
It was too much.
I said. Previous owner wanted us to.
We tried donations.
She sort of wanted a lot of money for it. Um, I think from, from his point of view, like I said, it'd be advantageous for us to get at least a portion, at least the north end of the creek. I think he is proposing this just because he wants that creek to be more of a cut off of his property line. Um, so he doesn't have a strip on the north part of that creek, you know, it's just more defined for him. You know, it's kind of a wonky little piece for him to have on the north side of the creek there.
I think it's, I, they entertain some further discussion, I guess, for me.
I'd be curious who's, uh, who's going to pick up the tab for this because it seems like every time we do a like kind exchange, the taxpayer in this town picks up the tab for plating, for attorney fees, and it turns out that it's not like kind.
Yeah. So I, I told him to see if you guys are interested in this and that if you are, that he should submit a formal proposal, yes, what exactly he wants to switch us for and who's going to cover those costs. So to be, then we'll present a formal proposal to the council.
So hypothetically, that creek on the east side of Main there that's on Mr. Overdon's property becomes, becomes an issue. It gets filtered in. It's restricting flow. It's backing up, potentially flooding the fire department. What does that cost the taxpayers to talk, you know, get Mr. Overdon to deal with his problem?
Yeah, because currently we don't even have an easement there at all that would even allow that maintenance to do.
We can't just, we can't just, you know, take our rubber tire back over there and just start digging it out.
Well, you could tell him that he's going to clean his portion of the creek up.
Sure. And if he doesn't, then we got to hire Tom, send him a letter.
Yeah.
Remind me where the bike path for the.
So it'll follow the, the north side of the, the creek. Cause we see we have city property. It will be on the city property is what we're proposing.
So when it gets down to his property, it goes away from the creek?
It will go away, yep, because it'll go north because we're proposing just, you know, that's what the city owns to go out this finger there.
It's going to have to go away from it anyway because of the box office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd probably stay in the same.
Bike path. It probably won't affect the bike path whether we do this or not.
Yeah, I mean, if it was entertaining discussion and talking about costs and it seems to me like you pay me now or you pay me later, um, in a pro- proactive and trying to acquire that land, it's probably less expensive to do it. When you have both parties willingly sitting at the table.
How did this come up?
I'm thinking, I was just going to say, I think why this came up is after we had it surveyed to figure out exactly what we had to work with, we all of a sudden realized that we had land on the other side of creek that we didn't know we had. Because we've always assumed.
The south side of the creek.
The south side. Yeah, we always just thought that was, um, what was his name's property?
Bullinger?
Bullinger's, yeah. Cause we tried to get into it before and he said that was his property and we never looked into it. Did surveys on it. So all of a sudden when we had it marked, we've got fifteen feet on the other side of that where the old bridge was at and then it follows straight on up through his, in his property.
I, I don't know. Yeah, Mr. Overdon came to me and this, so he didn't say what.
I'm, I'm still, I'm still savoring Craig saying that a guy said, that's my land, not the city's. And Craig's like, ee. I'm still, I'm still savoring that little, I'm still savoring that little nugget.
That's, uh, that bridge out there, that's Mount, right? That's an old mount. I mean, it's currently a mount if you look further north.
That old bridge used to be what, it was a road or just a private drive that went to a house back in there at one time.
Okay.
Um, there was a street at one time that was called Church Street that went about in that area and then it followed up and went over toward the cemetery, but that has got abandoned quite some years, thirty years.
Yeah, so you could go from a Catholic church to the cemetery. Church, Church Street is the least. You probably know more about this than we do.
The Catholic church is to be beside the Catholic cemetery, I miss.
We have a motion to direct the city to continue discussions with Mr. Overdon.
Our motion to have him submit a formal proposal.
Put it on the agenda, that's all we have to do.
Put it on the agenda. That's it for the agenda. We need to move into executive.
I don't have anything for executive.
I don't have anything. House member? No? See, Doug? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
A motion, we have a second. All in, Laban, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed?
Aye.
Aye.